Hey folks, thanks for coming tonight. Let's go ahead and bring our May 25th meeting to order, to do that. Let's go ahead and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance if you don't mind. Thank you. Roll call Crystal, please.
Here.
Trustee Jerome.
Here.
Trustee Kenny.
President.
Trustee McDonald. Trustee Whitehouse. Mayor Protem Knutson. Hammond.
Here. Are there any amendments to agenda that we need to know of this evening? Okay, any conflicts of interest that we bring up? Alright, we'll move on to the community participation, public comment. Let's see who comes in here. Okay, this is the public comment portion. We'll begin with individuals attending virtually. If you're wishing to speak on items that are not action items tonight on this agenda, you'll need to raise your hand now. Once we're called upon, please state your name and address for the record, and individuals will be limited to three minutes during the public comment. After we have heard public comment from those attending virtually, we'll take public comment from individuals here in the chambers. So that being said, Crystal, let us know if there's any out there.
We have no hands raised at this time.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the people that are attending here in person. If you'd like to come up and approach the podium, please do. You have anything to talk about.
Christine Gator, 81, 32, Fourth Street. I just want to talk about the comprehensive plan and the land use code, and I know it's at Logan Simpson right now, and they're gonna work on the final draft, but I do have some suggestions, requests, that we elected the board to set the vision for the town and set policies and codes, and that's exactly what this is, but this has kind of been hands-off from the board's perspective. There's no been, there's not been any input by the board, just citizens and consultant, and hired consultant and hired staff. They're the ones making it, and I just feel like the ones that we elected should be the ones making it. So my request is that, once they finish the final draft, if you guys can go through it at work sessions, we already have the public comment, but just to make sure that it's specific to Wellington, because they're not, they don't live in Wellington, the Logan Simpson outside consultants. And the thing that really bothers me is the code, and I just don't want codes being made without your input. I just don't want it to be passed as a big lump thing. I just want it to be worked on by you guys and having your input in it, because I haven't seen your input in it. So just a thought about how to make it more us making it, instead of these outsourcing your responsibilities. That's how I see it, and it's just really important that the people we elect are the people that make this. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Good evening. Callie Cooper here, Executive Director of the Wellington Main Street Program. I am here tonight, actually, to say thank you to this board, town staff, Parks and Rec Department, and especially our Public Works Department, for your support of the Wellington Main Street Program's summer projects and events. Without the use of town staff hours, equipment, and commitment from its leadership, we would not be able to pull off events like the Main Street Market and Wellarama. Next week, we will be planting 24 sets of downtown flowers. That would not be possible without the support of the town. In exchange for the continued services provided by the various town organizations, such as the maintenance and use of Centennial Park, fencing, security personnel, and staff hours, we have made the town of Wellington an official sponsor for this year's Wellarama Music Festival and Games. We hope that this small gesture can accurately convey the deepest appreciation we have for the time and energy that goes into supporting these community projects and events. Thank you.
Thank you, Callie. Appreciate everything you and your team do there very much. Looking forward to it. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Lori Wedeman. I live at 2339 Grant Avenue. Concerned about our water issues in the fees. I do acquire maintenance, so water's a big deal for me. I'm not sure, I've been learning and watched the meeting from a week ago. A couple things I was concerned about was how much outreach there has been to other representatives. Our Congressman, Hickenover Bennett, anyone that might know how we can get some help to help subsidize our water. I tried reaching out to a few people. It's all above my pay grade. I don't have one, but it's it's brought, I think there's an answer out there versus just having the citizens bear the whole fees of all of it. I kind of, I went through my water bills for the last two and a half years and looked at the raises, and the proposed raises on the simulation they did with Excel. And at this weight, I will be looking at $500 to $600 a month in two years. There was a concern that we don't want to do too much of a raise for tap fees, because it would discourage people from coming here, what their average income is someone who's living here, what they can afford to do, to buy here. Well, if you buy here, is there a disclosure saying what your rates are going to be in a couple years? Is what, there was a lady at the last meeting that we were here, she had mentioned she would spend $300 a month to take care of some disabled children that she takes care of, and I know that's part of her income. But if the rates go up and the bases go up, like I was perceiving that projection, she's looking at $400 or $500 a month, too. If she's at 300 now. And so it's, I don't know the solutions. I just had a suggestion for reaching out more. There has to be an answer. I also wanted the numbers to be run, I know he was able to click and move in the Excel program, the numbers to move in a shorter period of time versus as painted off ideally by 37. How long's the plant gonna last us? How long, I mean, can we project those numbers out a little bit longer? Where I know with a car, I might pay my car off in five years, but I'll keep it for 15. I know you have to look at when you're doing loans, on how it's going to be solvent here or there. I get that. But I feel like there's some number somewhere we're missing a piece, and I would like to see those scenarios work differently, and if we get grant money, what that looks differently versus raising our fees next month. Can we do a smaller percentage right now until we know there's, there's money somewhere? We shouldn't bear it all right now. So that, that's all I was looking at there. And I did have a concern about the, is there a way to go through and have your meters audited? Or some of the numbers looked at, when I was going through the bills, some of it didn't look right to me, and I can follow up with the office with that. Do we have a plan for delinquent accounts? If fees are gonna be hundreds and hundreds of dollars a month for a family of five, what are we gonna do with delinquent accounts? So I have some concerns. Do I have the answers? No, other than to reach out to other officials where that's their expertise. I would like to see a follow-up to say, we've reached, I mean, I sent letters to three or four in an afternoon. I don't know who they are or what all their jobs are, but I'm hoping instead of thinking we're going to hire someone to look for grants, maybe we can hire someone just to reach out to the existing officials that we have in our state and full government. I know I'm over time, so.
No, Lori, a couple things, though, real quick. You might visit with our administration about those projections. I think you're off on that, okay? That's not our intentions to have the water go up that high, okay?
Okay.
I can't do it right now, or because I
Sure, I get it.
I know, I can't imagine it being that high, that's, that
Mine's already three times the price it was a year ago.
That may very well be, but 400 and 500 bucks a month, I don't think.
Well, I will, I'll go over that.
I do that, and let me tell you something else. Patty and our administration, and we are, I've been talking about reaching all these other people that you're talking about.
Sure.
Congressman Nagus, Hick, you know, government policy, even federal level, all this kind of, we're not gonna leave any stone unturned, and it's gonna be an ongoing effort, because they're not ready to, they're not ready to out, to roll out infrastructure programs yet that they've been working on, but we're gonna be in position for that.
So that being said, can we then delay some of these rate hikes?
Well, I don't know that yet.
But do you know what I mean? That's just
If you get a promise, if we can get some commitments, maybe, but we don't have a commitment yet, so.
But having us bear the full brunt of the full price of the whole project now versus a small increase?
Right. When we get, when we get some more answers, which we're gonna be working on here over the next year, we'll be able to plug that in and massage this thing a little bit. We're just at a starting point.
So because my rates basically look about three times what they were a few months back, when there's monies coming in, is there a plan then to reduce my rates back down?
I haven't, we haven't touched on that yet.
Yeah, so those are just things that I would like to see and will be following,
Absolutely.
Because it makes a big difference on whether I can stay here or not.
Right.
And my intentions when I lived here was to, so other than not getting mail delivered to my house, this is the only other issue. All right, thanks, guys.
Appreciate it, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Hammond, can I say something? Just to anybody in the crowd here, or anybody listening online, if you are struggling with paying your utility bills, please reach out to our town staff regarding water. There's also a couple county programs that are available for utility assistance right now. Details on how to, how to apply for that are available on our website. So I just want to make sure you know that we're doing what we can to support. We are finding some resources available and sharing them, but of course, when it comes to your water bill, we can't make an arrangement with you. We can't help you unless we hear from you. And when we do hear from you, please be nice. We're all trying to help and do our part, and our staff definitely don't set the rates. So any kindness there is appreciated, too, but we definitely want to help you. So give us a shout out if you need some assistance or need some more details on your specific bill.
Thanks for that. Okay, anyone else would like to come up? Now's a good time. Okay, we're gonna close the public portion of the meeting tonight. Start with our action items. Thanks for bringing that up. Alright, action, alright. Action item one, Resolution 14-2021. It's a resolution authorizing temporary closure of roads for the 4th of July event.
Alright, good evening, Mayor and trustees. For you tonight is a resolution for the road closures for the 4th of July event. The CAC has worked with the Wellington Fire Protective District to ensure that these road closures will comply with their emergency access necessary on the days of the event. Those first four requests in the staff memo are related to the parade. The fifth one is for the fireworks, and the sixth one is for the festival. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Board members got any question on the road closures?
Chief Green, were there any concerns in the fire district on these closures?
Gary Green, 81, 33rd Street, Wellington Fire Protection District. In answer to your question, now, we, we review these with staff on a regular basis, and if there are any concerns, we find ways to mitigate those, so.
Awesome.
Anything else? Anyone want to weigh in on this tonight? Start virtually.
No hands raised at this time.
The chambers, anyone come and speak on this?
Gator, 81, 32, Fourth Street. Just had a question as to where people are supposed to park for the Buffalo Creek event, since the Buffalo Creek Parkway is closed. Where, where do you want any people to, just park in the neighborhood, I guess?
I'm not sure about that. CAC?
That would be a good question. Hallie, do you know the answer to that, or do we need to ask that at the CAC meeting?
I believe the intention was the surrounding neighborhood, as well as that First Street corridor on the east side of Wellington Community Park.
Okay.
And the Buffalo Creek Parkway leading up to Stampede Drive. That's where we would be closing the road.
I suppose, I assume all this is gonna be posted somewhere and that kind of thing, and
Absolutely.
Alright, alright. Anyone else? Okay, let's bring it back to our board. I don't have any further comment. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution Number 14-2021?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Hey, number two.
Thank you.
Resolution Number 15-2021. This is a resolution authorizing the temporary closure of roads for the Wellington Brew Fest event. Ms. Uger.
This resolution is coming, the Wellington Main Streets Program is hosting the Wellington Brew Fest on June 5th, and they have requested the southern portion of Harrison Avenue between Third and Fourth Street to allow for food truck parking. They will have access on the north side of the road, and they will have some areas for some Uber and Lyft pickups. Wellington Main Street is also working through the special event process with the town and the fire department to ensure that the event is safe. And we have a special event liquor permit that is on the Liquor License Authority agenda this evening as well.
Okay.
Callie's here, if you have any questions.
So yeah, we would like to request the closure of the parking lane on the south side of Harrison Avenue for the purpose of food trucks. We will also have a designated area right off of where the Public Works Building is, where Uber and Lyft drivers will be available for those attending the event to get home safely.
Okay. Board members got any questions for Callie on this?
Have you guys taken time to reach out to the citizens that live along that side of the street, or will it impact them at all, or is there parking elsewhere for access to houses?
Again, the idea is to only have that parking, or only take up the parking spaces that are on the park side.
Got it.
Correct, so that we would leave the lane open for any emergency vehicles, and then their parking in front of their homes would not be affected.
Okay, perfect.
Other than people attending the event may parking there, maybe, may park there.
Anything else?
I just have a question for staff. In the future, can we put a copy of the road closure map in the packets, please?
Now that wouldn't be nice. Okay, a public comment on the issue?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Anyone in the chambers like to comment on the Brew Fest? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board.
I think it's a great idea for the Lyft and Uber. I think that's a good addition this year. I don't know if that's been done in previous years, but I think that's a nice safety option.
That's right.
Thanks for that consideration.
How many people are we expecting?
So we are planning on roughly 400 people.
400 tickets?
400, so we sold 350 tickets, and then 50 individuals volunteering brewery, staff, personnel, things like that, so 400 people total.
Okay, good, nice. Alright, if there's no other comments, and can I get a motion to approve Resolution Number 15-2021? 2021 Resolution Authorizing Temporary Closure of Roads for the Wellington Brew Fest.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
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 Mayor Protem Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Callie. Look forward to it. Action item three tonight. This is ordinance Number 6-2021. This is ordinance establishing fees and charges related to water taps, sewer taps, and raw water cash in lieu of dedications. At our last meeting item, this is an ordinance, okay, sorry, Staff, Cody Byrd.
Thank you, Mayor. Cody Byrd, Planning Director. I'm presenting this item tonight, kind of in summary. I want to give some shout-outs to some of our other staff members, too, who helped put some of this information together, and I'm certain that they will be able to answer any questions if they do come up as well. So I'm just providing a high-level summary. As the mayor said, this is a proposal to consider an ordinance updating the town's fees and charges for water taps, sewer taps, and our cash in lieu of raw water dedication requirements. Kind of, just for some summary background, the board knows, and for those listening in tonight, the Board of Trustees and the town have been evaluating water rates, and now sewer rates as part of a wastewater treatment plant expansion and upgrade project. We've modeled a lot of different scenarios to come up with a set of recommendations for utility user charges, as well as our tap fees. The tap fees are a one-time fee collected at the time of a building permit issuance, and of course, the user charges are the monthly rates that our residents pay and our businesses pay. The, the board met in a work session last week on May 18th to hear this presentation. So some of this information, our board has already heard, but we're gonna go over it again, so bear with me, just so it's part of the public record here. At that work session, the board was presented with information regarding the water tap fees. The board recently updated the water tap fee for a 3/4-inch residential tap from the prior $5,500 to $7,500. And following that action by the board, some additional analysis with more current information actually revealed that that rate is more likely appropriate at $7,750. So that additional increase is proposed as part of your draft ordinance tonight. The board, when they took the action earlier this month to increase the tap fee for just the 3/4 residential, 3/4-inch residential tap, we had presented some additional information that we needed to also update the fees for the larger tap sizes, 1-inch, 1 and 1/2-inch, 2-inch, that we see more typical for commercial developments. Those were not updated then. They are proposed for fee updates in the draft ordinance that's presented to the board tonight. Those are largely proportionate based on the volume of water that can pass through the meter for those various sizes. You'll note that in the table in that, in that draft ordinance tonight, anything larger than a 2-inch tap is proposed to be calculated based on the use. So as we see larger volume users that need more than a 2-inch meter, we would look at that specific use, how much water they would need, and we would charge an appropriate fee based on that tap size. Same is true for the raw water component, which I'll circle back to in just a moment. So on the sewer side of things, actually, if I am following in your, the order of your packet here in the staff report, the next item was the raw water cash-in-lie rates in lieu of dedication. The board might remember, last fall, the board was presented with information regarding the increasing costs of acquiring water shares that provide the wet water the town relies on. At that time, in August of 2020, we were seeing continually increasing cost in the, of acquiring shares of, for water. And to reflect that increasing cost, the town adopted a cash-in-lie rate that looked at the indoor usage demand and the irrigation usage demand, and we divided that water dedication component into those two respective parts, because so many of our subdivisions have non-potable irrigation systems. So because of that change, we looked at updating the fee for those two respective parts and increased those fees to reflect the market value of shares for wet water. We've, after presenting that information to the board and taking action on that, the board had requested that the town staff bring back periodic updates on the market pricing and see if there was any changes needed to the town's cash-in-lie rates. We've evaluated those numbers. What we've seen is that, over the last three years, prior to tonight's discussion, we were seeing and calculating for a 40% increase annually over the last three years. With the new current data that we've seen in share pricing, it's kind of stabilized. And so recalculation using the same formulas, the same variable inputs, we are proposing a reduction in the raw water cash-in-lie price because of that stabilization in the marketplace. We're not seeing shares sell for over 200,000, so we're updating our numbers, and the proposed cash-in-lie rate is, is to decrease by a few thousand dollars. That number is in the, the table in your packet on page 15. Then, the, the third component of your agenda packet for this item, this draft resolution, is the sewer tap fees. Again, the sewer tap fee is an impact fee. It's collected one time at the time a building permit is issued. The current fee is $7,500 for a standard 4-inch sewer tap. That, that 4-inch sewer tap serves most of our residential uses and many of our business uses. So based on the financial modeling that the town has looked at for needed changes to fund the wastewater treatment plant expansion project, we've looked at the tap fees, how many permits we expect would be issued, as well as the user rates, and we've proposed a couple different scenarios for the board to consider. The current staff recommended option is included on page 16 of your agenda packet under that, and that has been presented in other meetings in the past as well, so it's nothing new. You've seen that same table before. But that, the recommended option currently proposes a fee increase to the sewer, a standard 4-inch sewer tap from the 7,500 to 9,700 is the proposed. And that, all that information is in your, your draft packet, excuse me, your draft ordinance that's in your packet. On the sewer, we'd also point out that there's a new fee that's, that's proposed. It's for a 6-inch sewer tap. We do see 6-inch taps for commercial uses, sometimes multifamily uses, and it's appropriate to include that fee, because we, we can calculate the volume that would be, being placed into our system for treatment. Anything larger than a 6-inch sewer tap, similar to the water for the large sizes, we would propose that based on, on the use. Some additional things that we might point out, previously, the, the town has not collected a meter fee. The meter fee is proposed in your draft ordinance is the actual cost incurred by the town to purchase the actual physical meter, and other communities up and down the front range pass that cost on with the cost of the permit, so we're proposing to do the same. For the 3/4-inch size, that cost is low enough that we're rolling that into the tap fee, so that you'll see an NA there for the 3/4-inch. The larger meter sizes have a significantly increasing cost there, so we would just pass that cost on at the time of permit issuance. And then the, the last component I wanted to point out on the table in, in your packet is the, on the sewer side, there's a couple of placeholders for the future. On the commercial sewer, you'll see placeholders that say "future consideration", and that's for various commercial uses and light industrial, industrial uses. Those, those higher intensities put a larger demand on our system. The town staff will be continuing to evaluate some other options for how to reflect the proportionate burden on the infrastructure system to treat those higher intensity uses. So just wanted to point out that's a placeholder for now. We'll get some additional information with the board in the future, but it's, that's not included in your ordinance, but it will be a consideration to help balance the impact fees and the user rates in the future. I'm happy to stand for any questions. Mr. Mayor, I would point out that because this is an ordinance contemplating fee changes, is a public hearing, so you can allow that public comment when you're ready.
We're voting to increase these fees, yes.
If that's the board's desire. The, the ordinance that was prepared and is in your packet and draft form, if you're comfortable with that, or excuse me, with that ordinance, you can adopt it, or you can adopt it with modifications.
Yeah.
Excuse me, or you can instruct staff with some directions to go back and evaluate something further.
Good, alright. Just gonna get tripped up there. Okay, any questions for Mr. Byrd?
I have a couple questions. You want those now or after public comment, Mayor?
Oh, I think you, I have now.
Okay. So just a couple of questions. I know you mentioned, and just wanted to clarify that with the change in cash-in-lie, that's due to the decrease from the 40% growth that we've seen in the price of North Pooter. What did that decrease to in terms of when we're calculating that?
Excuse me. Yeah. So good question, trustee Gator. The, the 40% that was calculated was based on the inflation factor we were seeing over a three-year period. When we recalculated that, the 2017 average share price was dropped off and recalculated that new percentage is 25%.
Awesome. Thank you. And then with the changes on the tap fees, does that move our total cost of pulling a permit for a new home completely? I understand every community is different. But does that put us in a place where our fees are all of a sudden completely out of the park higher than every other community around us? Or are we still roughly within the ballpark?
Another great question. So it, it is starting to increase Wellington's per lot permit costs higher than our other communities in our, in our front range here. It's, it's hard to compare apples to apples, because every community evaluates their fees and the rates based on their needs. We're confident as a staff that the fees that we're proposing do accurately reflect the community's current needs. But we are seeing that, that the combined cost of pulling a permit, which includes all the impact fees, the permit, the actual building permit cost, administration, our parks fees, library, all of our other fees that are associated with that. In total, our, our cost for a permit for a single-family home is considerably higher than the front range.
But compared to previous Cody, the indoor end irrigation is actually down 3,300 over what it was last year. And for indoor use only, only went up $243.
That's correct. And, and thank you, trustee Knutson. I, I failed to mention on page 17 of your packet, we did put together kind of a table showing the typical, and this one, this table is only looking at the impact fees. As I mentioned, there are some other fees associated with the cost of pulling a building permit. But, but yes, trustee Knutson's notes were straight out of the board packet with regards to an overall reduction in the, the fee for an indoor water only with, with a non-potable irrigation system for outdoor. I'll point out there, the, the bottom line on that page 17 of your packet, just, it's kind of a tricky nuance, because many of our subdivisions have development agreements that have been in place for a number of years. And the language used in those development agreements accounted for a 50% reduction of the total water cost. And so to come up with that number, we took the combined total, the indoor use plus the irrigation use, and divided that in, in half to come up with that 50% number. So for, for most of our new subdivisions that are pulling permits, they have non-potable irrigation systems. The total fee change on the impact fee side is a, of course, an addition or an increase in the water and sewer taps, an overall reduction in this, in the cash and lieu for the raw water. So most of our new permits are paying on average about $500 more as a result of that total fee change you're considering tonight.
Anything else? Okay, let's open the public comment. Let's talk virtual client to public first.
I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the in-person public in the chambers. Mr. Roberson. How are you tonight?
Living dream. How are you?
Trying.
Hopefully I won't go over, I put this together at the last minute, so, but I'm Darren Roberson, Sage Homes and developer. Mr. Gator, you had a question about other municipalities on permit fees. I actually put together Berthith, Timoth and Wellington where all the fees are. I emailed, it's Cody tonight, so you guys can always have it emailed, or I got copies if you want to see it. I can pass it around, so.
Yeah, sure, sure.
So I just want to point out where Wellington stands compared to other municipalities with the rising cost of building a new home. I'm pretty sure everyone is where it all is going up. I do believe there are many that feel developers do not pay their fair share and it's time to start making them. Or as some would say it, sticking it to them with increased fees. Keep in mind, developers are not going to pay these fees and will ultimately pass them on to the new buyer wishing to move to this community. Many buyers want to move to this community for either the amenities they have to offer, like schools, work, location. Additionally, many buyers have to decide on what they can afford on, not afford based on the cost of the home. Two, the average cost to build a home excluding the permit fees and lot cost is typically the same. If Wellington makes the permit cost on average 15 to $30,000 more to build a home over other towns along the front range, this will make it less likely they will move to Wellington. This will not be the developer or the builder absorbing these increases, but ultimately the buyer wanting to live in the Wellington community. If builders knowing they can build a home for less money or offer more in the communities, they're less likely to want to buy lots from developers in Wellington also. And I'm sure there are many right now jumping up and down and high-fiving with this idea that it slows down growth. But what you should be more concerned with is if there is no growth, there is now no money coming into the town for services paid through new building permits either. No additional money for fire department, safety services, streets and roads, parks and trails, library, sewer and water tap fees, or administration. Everyone again thinks the developers should pay more than their fair share, and I believe they do. But again, all they are going to do is pass this on to future homeowners. That homeowner will then, after rolling into the mortgage, be paying double the fees for 10-plus years with their mortgage over what a current citizen within the community is paying to help pay for improvements to live within the town of Wellington. I believe we are at a crossroads with fees higher than any other city along the front range, and I'm sure I'm not the only builder or developer worried about risking millions of dollars to develop land, hoping a builder or buyer will be willing to pay thousands of dollars more to live in Wellington. Which in many cases, they farther commute to work than living someplace else. Additionally, there are increasing costs due to the current market conditions across the board in our industry, while at the same time being forced to limit the number of permits that can be issued in a major, is a major drawback to build or develop in Wellington right now. It typically takes 12 to 18 months to develop a site after it's planted. Now, and to plant a site to have develop a lots three to four years. Many think Sage Meadows started just yesterday, but it actually started in September of 2014. That was nearly eight years ago. If nothing more is annexed past what is in the works now, that might, that means it might be three to four years before anything can even be buildable again. If fees are not affordable, then developers are not going to risk developing more lots either. And remember, all these fees that you think developers paying are ultimately passed on to the new homeowner wanting to move to our community. The ones wishing to slow or, or no growth will have to also deal with no money coming in for improvements within the community they love to be in either sense. They will not have any revenue coming in with the new building permits. Right now, I'm almost done. We have 138 lots soon to be permit-ready in Mountain View Ranch. And roughly 28 lots left in Sage Meadows' third phase. Harvest Farms has roughly 30 lots left to permit. That is only 193 buildable lots that will be available right now for permits and revenue coming into the community. We are trying to work with the town, along with other builders, to help slow down the growth to only pull another 380 permits until the spring of 2024. I can personally say Sage Homes has not pulled a permit in the town for a few months to help out with the situation. And town staff has been great about communicating with us. With only 193 permits buildable on right now, the goal for the town is short 187 permits if nothing else is developed. I know I'm looking at taking a step back and right now develop and not develop the last phase of Sage Meadows or saddleback in the next couple of years, taking our new construction builders to other communities, because the risk is too great. If nothing else happens, I'm guessing you will also see permits slow down and see a major drop in 2023, 2024 and beyond. If developers and builders are not willing to take any more risk, which again means less revenue for the Wellington community to spend on parks, streets, roads, library, fire department, et cetera. Or even worse, to help pay for the new sewer and water treatment upgrades. Now, the last time I checked, zero still zero. Thanks. Any, any questions?
Yeah, absolutely. We, we've been working on this for a while now. Have you been able to talk with Cody and our people about what we've been proposing and going through?
Cody's been awesome and, and Bob Goulin's been awesome and communicating. And I think a lot of it was we were moving dirt, trying to fix another situation in Mountain View Ranch. And obviously, we got to move forward on those lots, but for limited on what we can develop. And I always hear that developers are the ones that need to be paying their fair share, which I think we do. And I mean, I love this community. We try to give back to it. But again, staff has communicated everything. But again, developers and builders also got to build and say, hey, why would I not build in Timoth or in Berthith when I can build for 30,000 less? And with more amenities. And we're at a crossroads where I think Wellington's at a time to grow and has great new school coming on board, but it's hard to sell a lot when it's 30 grand more. Because the cost to build a house, doesn't cost you more to paint a house in Berthith than it does in Wellington.
I get it. You know our situation. We about grew our infrastructure.
And, and, and that's why I think you got many builders actually trying to partner with Cody and Bob Goulin and the town to say, hey, we'll limit growth. But I think we're at a point to where I think you're also going to see growth stop if we can't figure out a way to make it work. Because why am I going to go risk and put $7 million in when I can only do 40? I can only, I have no builder that wants to buy the lots. I'm, I'm just the stupid builder.
Mr. Roberson, I have a question for you. And you may, I know that you specialize mostly in, in residential, but you talk to other developers. And when we talk about commercial development, when I see these fee increases, something that concerns me is we pride ourselves on being a, a small-town community. And a part of being a small-town is mom-and-pop shops and small businesses. But with the cost of the fees going up, is that going to drive the cost of development for those kinds of businesses? Is that going to make it unaffordable for them to be able to start a business in Wellington?
I believe so, because also they're not going to have the rooftops to, to supply them with door, people coming in the doors. You know, so I mean, I think you're at, you're at a crossroads where you're going to have a little bit more growth and more rooftops before the, the small, the mom-and-pop stores are willing to risk putting the restaurant in or the other coffee shop in, because there's only so many people within the community and they're all commuting to work sometimes someplace else. But I mean, once you hit that goal, I think you still want to have good growth and good development, and you also want good commercial development too, and bringing the right companies. But it's slowing down growth for sure.
Well, I don't want to start a new buzzword, but I think that we want to try and achieve intentional growth. Because we're hearing that, you know, stopping growth is not the answer, but we don't want to overextend ourselves either. Do you have a perspective on what a balance of intentional growth would be for our community? I mean, you give a lot. You're involved at the Boys and Girls Club. You've watched the residential growth.
I'd like to probably get back to you on that, but I think it's, I mean, you guys, you got, you got builders willing to work with Cody and Bob and everybody saying, hey, we'll, we'll limit to 100, 110, 120 permits. But if the fees are 20, 30 grand higher to sell the same house, that's slowing the growth down. I think that's also scary in businesses to say, hey, do I want to go to Berthith, or do I want to go to Timoth, or do I want to go to Wellington? Because, you know, there's no new growth. And, and again, you're going to have bonds coming up to pay for all these amenities that you need to do. And if there's no development and a new, new growth or businesses coming in, then it's going to rely on the current community to have to pay for all that. Am I right?
Well, and then those businesses also provide employment for the residents of your community. And if the residents don't have employment in the community, then why?
Yeah, why build?
It's very cyclical, sounds like.
But I think you're at a crossroads where, I mean, I think you're, you're three, five years out. I mean, I look forward to when the school opens up. I grew up here my whole life, and I've always looked at Wellington as our, if we built in Wellington, we always had a great year, even though we built in Laramie, we built in Cheyenne, Timoth, Eaton, all these communities, we always fall back to Wellington. And I think that's why we're trying to give back, but we're excited for that 2025 and 26 and 27 and the new high school and stuff. But I think we're at a crossroads where new development is going to come to a halt, because it's just, no one's going to risk it with the way the fees are structured right now.
So what it, like, what is the rollout impact of that? The decisions that we make today, we'll start to see those effects in the growth and development of the community in two weeks, six months, two years. What would you?
You're going to see it in 2022, end of 2022, 23 and 24, for sure. I mean, I think you guys could see no growth in 23 and 24. If I don't develop or Hartford doesn't develop, so that means zero permits. And, because we're going to pull out and go to other municipalities that we know we can build 50 homes compared to 15 homes. Because, you know, even though we can build 15 or 20 homes in Sage Meadows, we're in a great community. Why do we want to develop and sit on 80 lots that, to hold them for two years? And so, I mean, I think there's got to be a balance, and maybe it's bringing builders and developers together with town staff and Bob and Cody. And I mean, I can't rave enough about Cody and even Bob on least open communication. So I, I hate, I hate to have their job. So, but, but if we can find a balance, and I think otherwise, you guys are going to be at a crossroads where it's going to shut down. And it's going to, I mean, we got enough permits. I have enough lots to make it till spring of next year. D.R. Horton has enough lots to make it through 2022. Hartford has enough lots to make it through 2021. What, you don't see any other piping stuff going in the ground right now. So, and, and people that want no growth, watch what you wish for. So.
Well, thank you for the cheat.
I hope it helps. I mean, we're not perfect either, and we all make mistakes, but we all love this community. So. Any other questions at all, or?
This is a great perspective. So I really appreciate it. And thank you so much for your compliments to our staff, because it's nice to hear that as well. Thank you.
Yeah, they're great. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Roberson, we appreciate everything you do here. It's valuable, the growth. We're just, we're.
That we can email to everybody too.
Have you had a chance to go through all this with our staff?
Cody definitely, and I think Bob has seen it. And, I mean, basically, it, it's spread out to where if you have a potable system or a non-potable system, what the rates are. And for instance, like with the non-potable system in Berthith, we're paying 49,586 for the same home that we're paying off the proposed current rates, 66,000 in, in Sage Meadows or 50,000 in Timoth. Everybody always thinks Timoth is the most expensive place to live, not on the permit fees, obviously. It doesn't cost anymore for the same two-by-four or the OSB right now.
Which is going up.
And you got to worry about, guys, guess what? It might not be your rates to stop growth. It might be, and this is not sustainable when lumber is skyrocketing like it is. And everything in the industry is skyrocketing. So you also got to plan, what if growth stops just because interest rates go up and costs go up too? And then, obviously, when you get down to Berthith with a non, without a non-pot system, you know, permits are roughly 66,000, where they're 96 to 92,000 in Wellington. Obviously, we never want to develop another piece of land without a non-pot system, but.
Not a good idea right now.
No, but everybody loved it three years ago and one of the big lots. And we've actually talked to town staff about taking saddleback and taking the same amount of land, but reducing it, or going from 153 lots to maybe smaller lots, more density, and getting maybe 190 lots, which creates a smaller footprint, takes less raw water, more building permit fees. You know, not everybody's going to agree with that, but I mean, if we got a water situation, why would you want 90 by 140-foot lots? So, so we'd love to propose that, but I mean, we're scared to take it through right now too, because we're not going to develop it right now.
Yeah.
So, you know, guys, I'm open for any time that someone wants to sit down with a cup of coffee and we're always learning too. And, and we want to see good growth here, for sure. And I know the other developers and builders do too.
Oh, you guys have been great to work with. So, just, we're, we're up against it. It's an unfortunate position.
Right. Well.
Like I say, the marketplace just might catch up to this whole thing, the cost.
And stop it big time. And then what are you going to do when there's none?
We're going to face that reality.
Yeah. But I was a little concerned when I hear in some of these meetings the last couple of weeks where, and, yeah, I know a developer is a great guy, but man, we need to make them pay their fair share. Trust me, I, we're paying more than our fair share. So.
We understand.
I, I was just going to, that was sort of my thought. Thank you for presenting this information. You know, the perspective that, well, the developers are some, somehow some bottomless well of financial, I, I was like, no, that's a certain point. I mean, at a certain point, you're going to just say, no, it doesn't work. And I, I get it. I mean, I'm, I'm, I get it.
I started in Wellington, I could build one house and buy 10 lots. So I definitely came up from the bottom, you know? And I'm glad you didn't time me, because I went over. So.
It's okay. You were part of the presentation.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Anybody have a question? Thanks. Anybody have questions? All or email Cody and I, so.
We appreciate it very much.
Alright, thanks.
Okay. We'll open it up to the public. You bet. Come on up.
Just had a question. If we don't um pass the increase in tap fees tonight, if you say no to the increase because of what Darren said, would that increase the citizens' rate? Is our rate the Does that make sense?
What makes absolutely sense is if you saw the graph, if you're not if you're not taking some of those impact fees to offset some of those other fees, you know, gotta make up the difference somewhere else, you know?
So our rate was based on these increasing, not where they were.
Number of impact and the number of permits too.
Right. No, I understood that. Okay.
And it's balancing kind of a tricky balance. Yeah. Anyone else?
So this was just a thought. So I understand, I I don't mind the growth. I yes, I understand it all needs to balance. When I look at the real estate around and listen to what's going on, houses are going for forty, fifty thousand over asking price.
Yes, they are.
So some of this just doesn't seem logical to me. So i- if you're passing it on to people anyway, and they're still spending an extra fifty thousand, and our our fees need to reflect pretty equally of what's going on. We have a problem. There's a problem. Of course, there needs to be a balancing act so that we do get new growth. I get that, but that part wasn't logical to me. So just an observation.
No, thank you, Lord. Anyone else? Anyone else like to comment? We got anyone virtual?
We do not.
Okay. Let's bring bring it back to the board. You know, the discussions on this, you ready to do anything with it? You wanna sit on it, think about it? Cody said we could still sit on it for a little bit if we wanted to, or we can pass it, or what do you want to do? Any thoughts?
I think uh I think I'm again, I'm not sure what the communications have been with uh obviously Darren and some other folks have been chatting um with Cody Bird and Mr. Gowing, so um maybe they could I'd just be curious to know about the input and if you know, has there been a builder summit, like a group meeting or something that where you kind of hashed out some of this stuff?
Yeah, this is Cody Bird, Planning Director again. There's not been a a summit, so to speak, with all of the builders in the same room. I know that I have communicated with most of our all the builders that are currently building in Wellington. I've had communications with them directly. I I'm not gonna say that I represent all of them and and all of their thoughts and comments, but I will tell you that the recurring theme that that I have seen from my conversations with our development community is that the kind of a couple of things. One, the 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 one-time large fee increases is very difficult to handle. Uh, historically, the town has has adopted, um, you know, dramatic, you know, thousands of dollar increases in our fees at one time after going for a couple of years without increased fees. Uh, I have uh kind of pledged my promise to to the town and to our development community to evaluate those fees on an annual basis and try to program those expected fee increases as an annual uh update with a smaller dollar amount. We know that these that the impact fees are going to continue to go up. You've most of our board members have seen that in the modeling exercises that we've looked at for the water treatment plant and the wastewater uh treatment plant projects. You look at those future years and those have programmed uh modest incremental increases. That expected increase is easier for developers to plan for because their financing, as Mr. Roberson pointed out with Sage Meadows subdivision, they began financing that project in probably two thousand sixteen or seventeen for the capital construction of the improvements, let alone the land acquisitions. Their finances get set pretty early on and they just want to be able to know what the expectations are. I hear that time and time again. You know, clear communications on on expectations when information is being presented to the board. So we have been, staff has been communicating when the board is having uh public meetings to discuss rate changes, fee increases. We're sending that information to our development community so that they can participate and hear the information at the same time that you do. I have heard the same uh recurring uh comment that Mr. Roberson brought up regarding Wellington's fees in relationship to other communities. We do acknowledge that um it's difficult to to compare apples and apples. I commented before. Other communities have some fees that we don't have. We have some higher fees than other communities have. Uh, at the end of the day, the bottom line is what the permit cost is. Ours, we are seeing is higher and we've heard that from our from our builders. I think there's some other variables in there that might be worth looking at and that could include the land acquisition costs, which change based on community. And certainly, uh, the what those homes are selling for. I think that some of the increased costs in Wellington are reflective of the current marketplace. Uh, we might see that change here in the future. Uh, I know all of our developers are concerned about increasing costs at the time of restricted building permits uh and managing their risk on projects that have already been financed. That's one of the the big things that uh we spend a lot of time talking about with our developers is what projects are already financially leveraged, what's their expectation for mitigating their on those current projects and how the town balance that through intentional growth and decision-making to meet the town's needs from a financial perspective, as well as the builders' expectations on their investments. We know that that's a challenge that's gonna need constant monitoring uh and check-ins, um, but I I am confident that what we're proposing is is the town's best effort from a staff standpoint to propose what is that balanced approach?
Absolutely.
So absolutely, uh, town staff has communicated on anything changing with all the developers, I feel like. And you know what? If this thing gets approved today, we can deal with it. We can make it work on my remaining lots that I have. I'm sure Hartford can make it work. I think the big point is is no developer's gonna go out knowing what the new cost is and try to sell to new builders and say, hey, your permit cost is thirty grand more than Timoth. Come buy lots from us.
Yeah.
And so I think that's what's gonna happen, guys, is we're not gonna go risk and develop Sage Meadows with filing or saddleback or Sundance or move to the south until we know that what our costs are gonna be. And and we really appreciate knowing that there's a constant now of hey, it's going up two hundred and fifty bucks a year instead of this, hey, ten grand because we screwed up in the past. So that's what we really do need. But our lots, our costs are factored in three, four years ago. So I'll get out of what we got now, but I'm not gonna risk it again till I I mean, at one point, I think you're gonna pay builders to come back. So that's sad to say, but I mean, it's gonna have to come down. I mean, otherwise, I'd rather live in, I mean, there's other communities out there.
No, I I get it. No, I get it. Uh, uh, we 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 ran into some cost increases rapidly in two years.
Well, and you know, we can all handle these permit fees. These permit fees going up right now, they're they're not a big deal. But you know, when the water went up last year and skyrocketed with a knee jerk, you know what? The town owned four shares of water. I got fifty shares in less than ten months. Now, guess what? I'm sitting here going, wait a second. Now the the ball changed and the game changed for the town and the cheese moved. Now I got fifty shares of water that I really don't need to give to the town. So I mean, that's that's the frustrating part for us is not knowing what what the game is and it keeps on moving. So but, you know, yeah, fifty shares of water in less than ten months.
So I appreciate that, Mr. Roberson, but am I correct that when the cash and loo fees were in rate before with the cost of North Pooter, your cash and loo rates to the town were roughly half what it would have cost you to buy the same share of water? Is that roughly correct from what I understand?
I think you guys based it at two hundred and eighty thousand a share and we were buying shares, you know, between one sixty and one ninety. So I think
No, not before the change. I'm before we cha- I know why we changed it, but I believe before the change, what you were paying the town in cash and loo was far less than the market value of a share of North Pooter.
What I had always said was, when the town raised it that much out of proportion, I said, the town won't make the money on the water. I will. So I think it's smart that you guys are changing it and being fair and fair on that. So I think this is a good move. I mean, it works better for the town and we can handle these. But I'm not gonna go out and risk putting in pipe and asphalt and all this stuff to develop another hundred lots uh when I'm restricted on what I can build. And the fees are twenty to forty grand more than thirty grand more than anywhere else. So, I mean, it makes sense now. And I'm glad that we have um town staff that actually is looking ahead like Cody and Bob and others that I know are behind the scenes. Because that was way skewed last year and was not not what the market was. So but again, I'm I'm the guy that goes out and buys fifty shares.
And you were a lot better at it than you're a lot better at it than we were.
Right, so.
You know, you knew you you know the connections and the people.
Need those shares of water now, so we probably got fifty shares up for sale.
Right.
So.
Maybe at a lower rate, bring the market value down a little bit.
I'll say that.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
The portion of this ordinance regarding raw water, since we're talking about that. When we're looking at these comparisons that Darren provided, it's obvious that, you know, the raw water is the most significant difference between us and other communities, which makes sense on our priorities. I think it also makes a lot of sense for us to adjust based on market prices. So exactly as written in the ordinance, it makes sense that we are matching, yet still being cautious for potential inflation. I think that makes a lot of sense, what we're trying to accomplish through this ordinance. But the I think the nice thing about this too is as we see those water rates continue to stabilize that inflation amounts or could even potentially decrease in the future, would allow us to then in the future reduce those wa- raw water and loo rates as well to continue to become more affordable against other communities. I can't say that's gonna happen for sure, but if we're seeing the trend that we are right now, that's likely to happen in the future. My hope is that maybe that would happen in the next couple of years and we would be attracting builders as needed. I can't tell the future, but given that is our top priority, um, I think it is important, of course, that we're being that we have the rates that we do and that we're being fair and that we're open to consideration to decrease them again in the future based on fair market value. So um regarding the raw water, I think this is a very fair and good um idea to make sure that we are approving within this ordinance.
Other comments?
I just wanted to point out a couple of things. And I hate to be the person that says that this board has tough decisions to make that, excuse me, weren't of our making. Darren pretty much spelled it right out. Sage Meadows started development in twenty fourteen. I don't think any of us were on this board in twenty fourteen. And our town staff did not include a town engineer. Our town staff did not include a town planner. We were still a really small town at that point. Oh, you were? Okay. Ashley was on the board. But that's not the point. The point is is this all snuck up on this town on a small town that was not equipped to handle what was going on. This town is now equipped with a crack staff that knows what they're doing and they're trying to figure out how to get us out of the mess that was created for us. I don't know that charging developers less or more is gonna fix the problem. We know that charging our our uh current residents decision and none of us probably took it. I I know I didn't take it lightly. I guarantee the rest of this board never takes any of this stuff lightly because for one, we're responsible to pay our bills, just as everybody else is. So I just want people to remember that we're working really hard as a group, especially our town staff. I mean, they put way more time and effort into trying to figure out how to get us out of the mess that that we're in than anybody does. And I know a lot of people don't believe it, but their heart and soul is in this town. You can, I can tell when I have meetings with these people that this is what they're living for and this is the most important thing to them every day. And I'm pretty sure they all take it home with them as I do. So as we move forward through this process, that's painful for everybody. I just want you all to remember that we're not doing any of this out of spite or out of favoritism or any other source other than the fact that we need to figure out how the citizens and the town of Wellington are going to move forward and flourish in the years to come. So um I just wanted to say that and publicly, I know we kind of dance around it a lot. But this is my town too. This is all of our trustees towns. These are our staff's town. Even if they don't live here, it's their town because if the town's not here, they don't have a job. And everybody, you know, needs to have a job and make their income, but they put their heart and soul into it and public service, especially for paid staff. I mean, I tell you what, I wouldn't take these guys' jobs a lot of time for anything. You you couldn't pay me enough money to to deal with some of the problems they have to deal with, but they're there every single day trying to figure out solutions to make our lives better. So I just wanted to throw that out there as a a thought for everybody as we move forward. Nobody's trying to overcharge anybody else. We're all trying to figure out how we can fairly move forward as a group and come out of this at the end and and have happy lives living in Wellington, our favorite town. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Jerome. Anyone else over there? Trustee Gator, one more.
Yeah. So I think as we look through this, I very much appreciate in conjunction with what trustee Jerome said is the work that staff has done on this. I remember when the previous board was first sitting down to look at the numbers with the water rates and the study that has paid tens of thousands, I don't remember exactly how much, tens of thousands of dollars to have a professional company come in. And I really feel like the numbers that we've been looking at with the wastewater plant that our staff has put together, the graphs that our staff have done take into much better account what's actually happening here in Wellington and really reflect the community. And I know aside from the hours they've put in the meetings here, I know I've personally sat down with them for multiple hours to work through my misunderstandings and things that I need to figure out. And I appreciate that. And I appreciate Mr. Roberson sharing the concerns of the development community. And I think that's you bring up some very real concerns that we have to figure out as if outside of the fees, if development comes to stop, how do we deal with that? I think that's something we very much have to address because we, regardless of how we got here, we are here. We're at a point where our water treatment plant can't handle, you know, the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of homes every year. We have to limit that. And so I think we've talked a lot is relying on the professional staff. I appreciate the staff has taken time to put together some numbers here and trying to again, find that balance. So not all of the burden is on the developers, not all the burdens on the citizens. And I think it's good for us to move forward and kind of put this in place and continue to look at things and see where we can adjust them down the road.
Thank you, trustee Gator. Okay, I'll follow up last comments. I I kind of tend to agree. We got to get to a starting point. Been beating this thing around and try to get to a fair and balanced. I listen to Mr. Roberson's concerns. And it sounds like we've got a little room to ma- play with. This is gonna be an ongoing uh effort to enhance our position as we go forward with financing, with uh avenues to uh, you know, acquire funds and that sort of thing to help us position out because none of it's really good, but it's a starting point and we've got to get started. So I'm I'm of the mindset to uh to kick this, kick this on and let's get going with it and then let's go see how we can make it better. And uh, that's what our staff will be charged with, that's what we'll be charged with. And it'll be for developers and for citizens. As we're all here and we're all in it. And and we're not gonna kick the can down the road. We're gonna fix this one. And then once it's done, all this will be in place for boards and citizens and developers and people to come. Then they can build and grow with confidence that they have the infrastructure in place to support it. It's we have to get going. And so I'm I'm of the mindset to to get going. So if that's if that's uh all I can say, then uh I'd like to entertain a motion to approve ordinance number six dash twenty twenty-one and ordinance establishing fees and charges related to water taps, sewer taps, raw water catch and loo of dedication. So moved. Second, roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald. Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Alright. We're gonna close this regular meeting. For some more regular meeting, I have seven forty. And I'm gonna open the liquor license authority board. Can I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Trustee Jerome.
Here.
Kenny.
Present.
Here.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Here.
Mayor.
Mayor Hammond.
Here.
Okay, first item tonight, Wellington Main Streets Program Special Event Liquor Application.
Thank you, mayor and trustees. Wellington Main Streets Program has submitted an application for a special event permit to serve fermented malt beverages on June 5th during the Wellington Brew Fest. Wellington Main Streets has submitted all the documentation needed for the permit application. The event will take place on June 5th from 2:00 to 5:00 PM and it's anticipated that there will be a maximum of 400 attendees at the event. They do have a variety of local breweries that will be serving alcohol during that event. The alcohol will be served by employees of the breweries and they will be tip certified. The, there will be food trucks onsite as well. Leave it to Cleaver and the Cakery. There will be security at the entrances that will be doing ID checks and providing wristbands to individuals over the age of 21. As a requirement, the, this meeting was, a notice was placed at the location publicizing this special event permit at the meetings and we have received no protest for the application as of the start of this meeting. As noted previously, the Wellington Main Streets Program has gone through the special event permit application through the town and the fire department to ensure that the event is safe for the attendees. And that is all we have and I'm available for any questions as well as Kelly Cooper.
Have you got any questions?
I just had a question on the application here. It says the hours are from 10:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Could somebody clarify that on the application being made for the permit?
Absolutely. So that is including our setup and tear down time from the event. That ensures that any alcohol that's being brought onto the premise, onto the premise during that window of time is covered under our liquor liability and liquor insurance. So we list those hours. The actual hours of serving will be from 2:00 until 5:00.
Got it. Is that 10:00 PM the night before to 8:00 PM the night of, or?
It should be 10:00 AM. I'm sorry.
Oh.
It should be 10:00 AM.
Got it. Okay.
I apologize. It should be 10:00 AM.
It just looked like a P to me. And now that you say A, I can see the A. Thank you.
Oh my goodness.
All right, anything else? Can public comment on the thing?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Just bring it back to the board.
Well, thank you so much for taking the time to put these kinds of events on that serve liquor in a safe and responsible way. You guys have done this historically for, this is your third year, fourth year? Third event, fourth year. If we just decide to forget last year ever happened. Yeah. So yes, thank you so much. That, that's all I wanted to say was thank you for being a responsible applicant. We're very excited.
Yeah, I think so. All right. No other further comments. I'd like to seek a motion to approve the Wellington Main Street Special Event Liquor Application. Second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Trustee Jerome.
Yes.
Trustee Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you all.
See you soon. Okay, item two. This is Wellington Grill Hotel and Restaurant Liquor License Renewal. Ms. Uker.
Thank you, mayor and trustees. Wellington Grill has submitted their annual renewal for their hotel and restaurant liquor license. A review of the application found the establishment is in good standing with the Colorado Secretary of State's office. They are current with their sales tax and the Limerick County Sheriff's Office reported no issues with the sale of liquor in their establishment. A physical compliance inspection was completed on May 7th and we reviewed things like having their liquor licenses posted, their underage warning posted, checked their liquor supply, things like that. And there were no issues during that inspection.
Guys got anything? Pretty standard, right? Okay, public comment?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Bring it back to the board. Can I get a motion to approve Wellington's Grill Hotel Restaurant Liquor License Renewal?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gator.
Yes.
Yes.
Kenny.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Whitehouse.
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Knutson.
Yes.
Mayor Hammond.
Yes. Okay, I got 7:45. We're going to close the liquor license review board and resume our regular meeting. Reports, town attorney.
I have a very brief update for you pursuant to the stipulation filed three weeks ago, I believe, and the ordinance referred two weeks ago regarding marijuana. Both lawsuits against Town Wellington have been dropped or have been dismissed by the court. So that is all handled and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick reminder of the town hall tomorrow night. It's from 6:00 to 8:00 PM right here where you're sitting. So hope to see you all there tomorrow night and that is for the public's notice as well.
Look forward to it.
Absolutely. We'll be ready. And I know we have one person that wants to give a staff report when the time comes.
Let's get ready and be enthusiastic about it. Okay, staff reports.
I just wanted to give a heads up that the Community Activities Commission is having their town yard sale on June 5th. Residents have been signing up to host yard sales at their homes and then the town will be providing a virtual and/or paper map for residents to go around town and shop from other community members. So June 5th, it is from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Right, sounds like good fun.
Finish your yard sale by 2:00 and then go to the brew fest.
Yeah, that's right.
That's my point.
Stop by as you're transitioning across town.
Yeah.
All right, board members, anything? Yeah.
So I had a couple of things. So I can't say your name, Hallie already gave you guys an update from the CAC with the town yard sale. So that's coming up. The 4th of July planning is going well. They are looking into, I don't think, I don't know if we've gotten anywhere yet with the, looking at having a nonprofit do a beer garden. They're still working through details of whether or not that's going to work. So I don't know finalization on that, but that's something they're looking to try and add potentially this year. But I think they've gotten all the plans and everything put together. One thing that they do need to know from the board is what kind of ice cream do we want to do for an ice cream social with the board? Because they'd like to have that again at the 4th of July.
Why do they keep asking us that? I don't get it.
Because it's a tradition, Mayor Hammond. We scoop ice cream.
Or hand out bars.
Ice cream bars on the 4th of July. It's a tradition.
We want to do in terms of ice cream for that.
Ice cream bars are easier. Otherwise, I think vanilla or chocolate, two options usually work well. Don't give people too many options, otherwise it's a mess.
I was going for the 10 options and that's, that's a good point. Anyone, any other thoughts? I'll just tell them vanilla and chocolate bars. Is that good by everyone here? Yes, yes. Okay, awesome. And then the one other thing I wanted to bring up, just, I've been out talking with citizens over the last couple of weeks. Had a lot of really good conversations. There's been some really positive conversations. There are some people out there that are, that, they don't like what's going on, but they understand what we're trying to work with and deal through. Kind of the overarching concern that we all already know is just concerns are with water. And one of the main, major concerns was, was brought up tonight by one of the citizens was just, please keep looking for alternative options. That they understand why we had to raise the rates, but they'd really appreciate it if we just keep looking for other ways to do it to help them out a little bit. Because a lot of the people I talk to, they're okay, but their concerns are primarily for those who are on a fixed income because it's really been a pretty drastic rate. So other than that, that was the main thing. So that's all I have for my update.
Thank you.
I don't know if anyone's noticed this, but those crosswalk, town is getting ready to put the crosswalks in. Apparently, engineers, engineers figured out some solution that was acceptable to CDOT for the unobtainable posts and bases. I think Alex did that, but you may not see him on Main Cleveland yet, but I know they set the bases in front of the middle school on Grant Avenue. I believe they did them over at elementary school and down south at Rice. So I think after about a year and a half, they're finally going to put those things in, which I'm, I'm sure I speak for everybody in the board that it's, I'm glad we're putting them in. I mean, it'll add safety and it's, it's a great thing to see. And they were using a new VAC truck, which is pretty cool.
Anything?
I don't have anything.
Anything?
I was going to mention, mention something about crosswalks too. Rice briefly had their surface level crosswalk sign displaced and they mentioned to me how much they really appreciated it, even just the surface level ones. They said it made a big difference with such increased volume and traffic this last year with pickup and the drop off, which was a nightmare. And they did the best they could, but they said that those signs were crucial and they were really worried about safety without them. So appreciate those being installed back in again and all the other extra efforts towards crosswalks. So thank you very much. I wanted you to know that Rice Elementary, they're the only ones I've talked to, but of course, really appreciate it. So thanks for those efforts.
Anything?
I'm good.
Okay, I'll finalize it up then. I had the recent opportunity to tour some other water treatment plants, Bob. I thought I might talk with you later about some options I got for you, okay? I involve a plane ticket. All right, never mind. Tomorrow's a big night, right? Let's all come together, team effort, right? We've got a lot of answers to give out. I appreciate everybody's help, the staff, people on the board. Let's, let's show them, let's show them what we know and what we're working on. And yes, continue to try to make this thing better as we go down because it's not over. It's going to be what we're going to be tasked with as we keep going, but I think we've got to get started. So this is a good time to show them what we know and what we've been working on and show them that we are trying, okay? I appreciate everybody's help and dedication. So that being said, I'd like to motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.